Can you hear me?
Yes. Board of City Commissioners, on June 24th, we are in the Tom Baker Meeting Room. We are going to first stand for, or we'll call Chaplain Callis up for pledge and prayer.
If you would stand with me for the prayer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. On behalf of Crisis Care Chaplaincy for Bismarck Burleigh County, thank you for the opportunity to open in prayer tonight. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, for this beautiful evening. Thank you for your creation and for the enjoyment we experience with the change of seasons and the warm summer weather. Thank you too for your protection amidst recent summer storms, and we pray for those experiencing loss of family and property. Please give them your strength and comfort. Thank you for the privilege of living in this city of Bismarck, as well as in this state. And thank you for the many blessings and opportunities that this local community offers for our families and for each of us who live here. I pray today for those who are in the offices that govern this community. I ask that your spirit guide as they make decisions, many of which are not easy, that they be wise and godly and would prove to be in the best interests of the community. Thank you for the freedom we as citizens have to speak up and be heard, whether in agreement or dissent, for in discussion and diversity comes strength in our community. I pray for the mayor, for those who work in that office. I pray for our city commissioners, for each one, as well as other elected officials and city workers. And I ask that each one would be blessed by you as they carry out their responsibilities. I also pray for our first responders, those who put themselves in harm's way to protect the citizens of this community. Our police and other law enforcement, firefighters, EMS workers, dispatch, healthcare workers and others. Please protect them in their line of duty so that they might continue to protect those of us who have placed our trust in them. So God, we thank you for your guidance in everything said and done this evening. And we're thankful for each and every one of the blessings you give us. We pray this in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think before public comment, we have a historical preservation award presentation from Lauren.
Thank you Chair and Commissioners. This is for the Historic Preservation Award. Preservation of a community's historic resources can provide a way for individuals to celebrate and recognize a community's past while serving, or striving to define it for the future. With this in mind, the Historic Preservation Commission wanted to recognize the efforts of residents in Bismarck, whose efforts support historic preservation goals. I would like to note that this is the first year for this award, and the Historic Preservation Commission is very excited to be able to recognize these achievements. The Bismarck Historic Preservation Commission selected Adolf and Peterson Construction as the 2025 recipient of this award for their recent preservation efforts on the former Prince Hotel. These efforts included maintaining the exterior historic character of the building, highlighting and preserving original materials, and repairing rather than replacing original building features. With that, I'd like to present this award to a representative from Adolf and Peterson Construction. We do have a representative from them here if we can take a photo.
All right, and since I didn't do it before that, we'll go ahead and call roll.
Commissioner Rish?
Here.
Commissioner Zanker?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Schmitz?
Here.
Chair Cleary?
Here. That brings us to public comment, restricted to items on the consent agenda and regular agenda excluding public hearing items. This is first call for public comment. Second call for public comment. Third and final call for public comment. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. I was going to go ahead and pull G1 for some discussion and more information from Julie, and then pull H4 because it is no longer needing, needed or potentially going to be changing before it comes back to us, so... Does anyone have anything else to add to that? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead and call roll.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rish?
Yes.
Chair Cleary?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to G1 from the consent agenda. Consider the request of approval from the Bismarck Event Center for the following. Agreement with Bismarck Event Center to use E-Tix as the BEC ticketing vendor for a five-year term with a renewal of two one-year options. Julie, I think you were just going to provide us some more information, since we've got a lot of moving parts down there right now.
Yes, Commissioner, so the Event Center issued an RFP for its ticket vendor, and they chose E-Tix. And then after that is when the commission had its vote about choosing a third-party operator, approving it to, for staff to do an RFP for a third-party operator. In the meantime, E-Tix and the Event Center are trying to come to an agreement over this contract. And so I've, I've suggested three options for the commission to, to look at tonight. One is that we sent, that the commission direct staff to sign the five-year contract as is on the agenda, or sign a five-year contract with a termination for convenience clause, which would allow the city or the third-party operator an easier termination of the contract if it becomes necessary. Or sign a one-year extension with E-Tix. And it's my understanding that Acting Director Amanda Yellow is in contact with E-Tix. Everything has happened within the last two days, so I'm not sure where we are with E-Tix, or if she's been able to discuss everything in detail with them.
Amanda, do you have any information to add? She is here yet.
Okay. Hey, I have reached out to E-Tix to just let them know of the request. I do not have an answer back from them, as far as what they would like to do. It was expressed to me that the understanding was, obviously, they bid this to be a little bit more aggressive, understanding that there would be a five-year term, so that's why they gave us the rates that they gave us and the equipment they gave us. Looking at a one-year extension would not allow us to have the updated equipment, would not allow us to have some pedestal scanners, which is, which helps with kind of the ingress of people coming in, taking some staff time away. There's actually an electronic scanner that they can scan their ticket under. And then also kiosks, they are looking to bring a kiosk to our lobby so we can sell tickets at box office prices in our lobby when we do not have our windows open to sell. So that is another nice feature that they're looking to bring. But those are items that would not be allowed in a one-year extension because they weren't agreed upon in our last contract, that would, we would be going off of. We also would not be getting the marketing dollars that they agreed to give us for this next year, and that was a big part of their agreement to go forward with this five-year contract. That was one of the big things that was looked at by the committee that reviewed them. So they have not told us one way or another of their decision, but those are some feedback points that I was able to get back from them.
Okay.
Sorry, one other note if I can make that, just for consideration too, this, the current contract does end on June 30th, which is Monday, and a new contract is supposed to start July 1st. So we definitely need a, a decision because we can't go without offering ticket sales.
Sure. So if we, like, move forward with this, with all three of the options that Julie laid out, with, for you to, like, continue the conversations of what a one-year extension looks like, or what adding a clause into the five-year contract would look like, but also us being okay with the five-year contract as well, if, if neither of those things pan out, is that something that we could do in that timeframe? We don't want you to be, like, hitting July 1 and not having it sorted out, so...
Right. I mean, they're ready, I mean, we've already got the contract in hand, it's in DocuSign to be signed from E-Tix currently, so, I mean, we've got from them what we need as, like, our first step, so I think now, they approval to move forward with, with Julie, maybe just kind of making the negotiations back and forth with them as to what this looks like would be much appreciated, and I think it's something that could be done by the deadline, which is next Monday.
Okay. Commissioner Rish?
Madam Chair, Amanda, I'm still not clear, what about option two, where you have the escape clause per se, but it's a five-year deal? Is that something you talked to them about?
I did. They said that is not something that's very common to have in a, in a, in agreement. And if there is any kind of a termination for convenience clause or something like that, that's usually identified in the RFP before they put together their proposal to submit. So knowing that that wasn't something that they were going to be faced with, they said that's where there's a little bit of a roadblock, because that's not something that they were considering being a part of the negotiation part.
I mean, I think that we probably could just, you finish those conversations and see if any of those things pan out, and if they don't, then we move forward and we just know that this contract has to go into the RFP for the third-party, correct?
Yes, we could, we could do that. We've also suggested that if we have a modification to the contract or a one-year extension, that the city could put in the RFP for the third-party operator, that we, the city would recommend that they use E-Tix as a ticket vendor, because they've been vetted, they've gone through the process, the staff is familiar with their processes. So that's another option that we could use during the negotiation, but I'm, again, we'll have to see what E-Tix comes back with.
Mayor, did you have something?
I would move that we, I'm trying to word this appropriately, that we, we accept the contract, but request that Attorney Mees negotiate to see if we can get a potential, I'll call it the escape clause or the convenience clause negotiated, but if we cannot, I think there's value to us accepting the contract as is and moving forward based upon what Amanda just presented and all the other benefits that E-Tix is providing.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Go ahead and call roll.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rish?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Chair Cleary?
Yes. Okay, on to the regular agenda. Item A, public hearing on a request for a new Class I-2 complimentary alcohol liquor license from, for Posh Nails and Spa and D LLC. This is a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak on this topic, please come forward. Second call for public hearing. Third and final call for public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. What are the wishes of the commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Go ahead and call roll.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rish?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Chair Cleary?
Yes. Item B, public hearing on a request for a new Class A nationally organized fraternal order or club alcohol license for Gilbert and Nelson Post Number 1326, Veterans of Foreign Wars, Department of North Dakota, VFW Post 1326. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak on this item, please come forward. Second call for public hearing. Third and final call for public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. What are the wishes of the commission?
Our move we approve is presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Go ahead and call roll.
Commissioner Rish?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes.
Chair Cleary?
Yes. Item C, public hearing on Ordinance 6620, a zoning map amendment from RM15 Residential District to a PUD planned unit development and a minor subdivision final plat for Southland Third Edition. Ben?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The development proposal that was just described by Madam Chair Cleary, the property is located in South Bismarck, east of South Washington Street, and adjacent and to the west of Peachtree Drive, also adjacent to, and south of Santa Fe Avenue. Project area for this proposal is comprised of 5.87 acres and would include 28 lots in one, or on one block. The future land use associated with the proposal is neighborhood mixed use, and the existing zoning is RM15 residential. The Planning and Zoning Commission did consider this request on May 28th of this year. Aside from the applicant, there were no oral or written, or, or written testimony which was provided. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of a zoning map amendment from the RM15 Residential District to the PUD planned unit development, which is outlined in Ordinance 662 in your packets, as well as a minor subdivision final plat, and then also a private utility agreement, which was a condition of approval and is included in your packets for consideration. Is there any questions that any of you have on this proposal that I can attempt to answer?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you. This is a public hearing on Ordinance 6620. Anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward.
Chair Cleary, Landon Aymer, Swenson Hagan Engineering, representing Sattler Homes on this. Nothing to add to what Bennett presented, just here for any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Landon? Doesn't look like it, thank you.
Thank you.
Second call for public hearing. Third and final call for public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead and call roll.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rish?
Yes.
Chair Cleary?
Yes. Item D, public hearing for Ordinance 6627, a zoning map amendment for the conditional RT Residential Zoning District to the P Public Zoning District on Lot 1, Schaefer Heights. Ben?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. The property in question that Madam Chair just described is located in central Bismarck. It's west of Ward Road and between College Drive and Edwards Avenue. The project area is comprised of 13.14 acres, includes two lots on one block. Future land use is institutional, and the existing zoning is conditional RT residential. The Planning and Zoning Commission did consider this request at the May 28th meeting of this year. Again, aside from the applicant, no oral or written testimony was provided for or against. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the zoning map amendment from the conditional RT to the residential zoning district to the P Public Zoning District, which is outlined in Ordinance 6627 in your packets. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Ben? Doesn't look like it, thank you, Ben. This is a public hearing on Ordinance 6627. Anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward.
Thank you again, Chair. Yeah, just to add to what Bennett mentioned, this is a Bismarck State College property, so changed the zoning to a, to a P public, would just bring it into conformance with the rest of the properties that they have. But any questions if you have them, I can try and answer them for you.
Any questions for Landon? I don't believe so, thank you.
Thank you.
This is second call for public hearing. Third and final call for public hearing, Ordinance 6627. Public hearing is now closed. What are the wishes of the commission?
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Go ahead and call roll.
Commissioner Connolly?
No, I think Landon might have jumped the gun, I don't think that's the, is Bismarck State College really going to own that property there? Gotcha, okay.
Okay, we have a motion. I'm sorry. A motion and a second. Go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rish?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Chair Cleary?
Yes. Item E, public hearing for Ordinance 6628, a zoning map amendment from the RT Residential Zoning District to conditional CG Commercial Zoning District in the Daybreak Second Edition. Ben?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The property in question is located in North Bismarck, which, and is north of 57th Avenue Northeast and west of Ridgeland Drive, along the north side, along the north, excuse me, and south side of 64th Avenue Northeast. The project area is comprised of 13 and a half acres and encompasses two lots on two blocks. Future land use is identified as neighborhood mixed use, and the existing zoning is RT residential. The Planning and Zoning Commission did consider this request at the May 28th meeting of this year. Again, aside from the applicant, there was no oral or written testimony for or against, which was provided. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of a zoning map amendment from the RT Residential Zoning District to the conditional CG Commercial Zoning District on Lot 1, Block 1 and Lot 1, Block 6, Daybreak Second Edition, which is outlined in Ordinance 6628 in your packets. Any questions for me on this one?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Ben. This is a public hearing on Ordinance 6628. Anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward.
Thank you again, Chair. Yeah, just representing on this one, yeah, this is a change we're, we're looking at here for daybreak, looking to, to construct a multifamily unit. The northern block that we're rezoning right here, the plans are already in the works for that. That's intended to be constructed this year, next year, sometime in that timeframe. The goal with the CG zoning though, of course, versus RT is we have some height restrictions that we're, we're working against with RT. With the CG zoning, it allows that taller building to be constructed and, and really suits the needs for this multifamily project. If it's successful on the northern block, then another project similar to that would be done on the southern block. So that's our request tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Landon? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Second call for public hearing. Third and final call for public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. What are the wishes of the commission?
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Go ahead and call roll.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rish?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Chair Cleary?
Yes. Public hearing on release of the southern two feet of the 20-foot sanitary sewer easement adjoining the entire north line of Lot 3, Block 1, Hamilton's First Edition First Replat. Lauren?
Good evening, Chair Cleary and Commissioners. Sattler Homes Inc. is requesting release of the southern two feet of the 20-foot sanitary sewer easement, adjoining the entire north line of Lot 3, Block 1, Hamilton's First Edition, or Hamilton's First Edition First Replat. The project area is located northeast Bismarck, north of East Century Avenue, east of Hamilton Street, in the southwest portion of the intersection of East Calgary Avenue and Calgary Point. The easement was granted with the plat of Hamilton's First Edition First Replat, which was recorded May 5th, 2022. Release of any easements other than franchise utility easements typically requires a public hearing with the City Commission. Owners of adjacent properties have been notified of the public hearing. Staff did receive one inquiry from an adjacent property owner requesting additional information on the project. However, that owner did not indicate if they were for or against the project. Staff has not received any additional inquiries or formal comments regarding this request. As a result of all findings contained within the staff report, City of Bismarck staff find that the release of the sanitary sewer easement, as described in the attached resolution, would not adversely impact the public health, safety and general welfare, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan, code of ordinances and relevant state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the release of a portion of the sanitary sewer easement over Lot 3, Block 1, Hamilton's First Edition First Replat, as noted in the attached resolution. Do you have any questions for me?
Does not appear so, thank you, Lauren. We will open the public hearing.
He's there for window dressing. Yeah, thank you, Chair Cleary. Yeah, on this project, what we're looking at here, this was a, a PUD that had been approved a number of years ago. In this case, the easement itself, the sanitary sewer easement, actually extends further into the lot than what the setback does. So at this point, we're trying to get a little wider house here, another two feet onto it. These are fairly small entry-level homes, so they need a little bit more room there to, to build that home. The sewer easement does protect a sewer line that is already in place, so it's not a matter of constructing at this point. It'd just be a matter of if it needs to be repaired at some point, there's still room for it to, to be accessed. You can certainly answer any questions if you have them.
Doesn't look like there's any questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Second call for public hearing. Third and final call for public hearing. What is the wishes of the commission?
Our move we approve is presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Rish?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes.
Chair Cleary?
Yes. All right, item G, consider the request to receive an update on the Tyler Cooley Regional Stormwater Project and provide direction on public engagement. Gabe?
Hello, Chair and Commissioners. We'll be talking about our Tyler Cooley Stormwater Improvement Project, known as Special Assessment Stormwater Improvement or Stormwater District 576. So I would like to visit with you about three things on this project. First, just an update and kind of a refresher on this. We've talked about this project, it's been in our master plan for a long time, but as we continue product development, we have commissioners come on board that might not have heard the conversation originally, and want to make sure that everyone's on page, on, on the same page of what we're up to and, and consistent with that. We're going to be talking about our Tyler Parkway project through the same general area, and where we might have some efficiencies that we could, you know, build some of these components together at the same time, maybe with the same contractors, et cetera. And then a discussion finally on our public communication and outreach. So first off, Tyler Cooley, this is the, in Northwest Bismarck, in a watershed that encompasses about 1,900 acres, largely developed. There's some areas of, of developable land that haven't been developed, but by and large, everything you see here that's, that's yellow either has a house on it or is zoned to have a house on it, and by, by the majority of it is, is already, is developed in its nature. We've had master plans from the very beginning, 2002, up, up through 2016, the most current and active one. Really from the get-go, the City Commission and our direction was, we can build in this area, but we know we got to do something with Tyler Parkway, or Tyler Cooley, to slow water down, to have detention and, and regional. And at the time, and some of the previous master plans, we said, let's put some dams in here, let's put some really large dams that hold a lot of water, and that will be the solution. So we didn't kick off that solution, but we've told everyone that will be the plan, and so then allowed all this development to occur, because we said we have a plan, we just haven't initiated that at that point in time. So this watershed drains, the farthest north area is Horizon Middle School, is that blue? I can put on my pointer here. So Horizon Middle School here, segments of Horizon Heights draining all the way through Tyler Cooley, and then out Pioneer Park to the Missouri River. So the goals of the project is to eliminate both the high-hazard dams that are there today, the embank- the embankments that we have of Valley Drive detain more than 25 acre feet of storage, as well as don't have the required stream crossing standards, so that would then allow it to not be classified as a high-hazard dam. So we have them in place, and nor do we want to have more of those. High-hazard dams require additional maintenance and inspections and additional spillway protection and just beefier infrastructure if you get above a certain threshold, primarily to protect all those people that might be subject to damage or worse if that dam failed. So our goal is to not have dams in our community as well as we can and to find solutions that aren't dam-related. So the other goals of this is to provide peak discharge control. So you'll see in that Cooley, if you go walk it, you'll see erosion. I mean, it's a Cooley, so some of that's going to be naturally occurring, but some of it is also contributed by man-made actions and our increasing of the impervious nature and the runoff that goes through this Cooley. We'll want to provide some stormwater quality components, and then this project is funded primarily through special assessments to the properties within the watershed. So it doesn't matter if you're at the very bottom of the watershed, the very top, if your water drains to Pioneer Park, those are the components, those are the properties that we would identify as being included in this special assessment district, similar to other regional projects that we've done throughout our community, and bringing in those properties that drain their water to that location. So the actual project is kind of twofold. The first component is detaining water behind new embankments, so we would go to the intersections of Claremont Drive, Valley Drive, would be future Tyler Parkway, and then in the Eaglecrest Development and place detention ponds. I think I go to the next thing, yep, so an embankment at the bottom of the Cooley, something in the range of, you know, 10 to 15, 25 feet high, which sounds like a lot, but when you look at the Cooley elevation relief, and in some spots it's 150 feet, so it's not like we're filling in the entire Cooley, I want to make sure that that's abundantly clear. But when it does rain, we would hold back enough water up to but not to exceed the 25 acre feet, many of them designed to 24.99 acre feet to get as much capacity as we possibly can out of that embankment before it triggers into that dam category. Every time I say that, I think I'm swearing, but I'm not swearing any of them. I'm referring to just dams, earthen dams is what I'm talking, embankments. The other component of this is to increase the capacity of some of the existing crossings that we have at River Road, at Claremont Drive, and at Valley Drive. Some of that is related to stream crossing standards, some of that is related to our own stormwater ordinance and wanting those roadways to be passable during a storm event. So we have those same requirements in other places. We expect that when there's a flood happening or a rainstorm, that we can get a fire truck across this, and there's not a foot of water on top of some of these higher arterial and collector-type roadways. So some of that is our own ordinances and guidelines that we're trying to follow that would necessitate the increased capacity of those existing crossings. The final component that I'll touch on here today is the improved conveyance through Pioneer Park. If you go down to Pioneer Park after a rain event, pretty much any rain event, it almost seems like there's a lot of water that jumps the channel. We've, there's not enough capacity in the existing channel to drain it all the way to the Missouri River, so it widens its bank. So you can see in this, the 10-year inundations during that 10-year event, which we'd expect to see once, or a 10% chance in any given year. The yellow area is what would get wet today under existing conditions. The green area is what we would expect to get wet during that same rainfall, once the proposed project is completed. So a combination of detaining that water upstream and in Pioneer Park specifically putting some berms along the channel that will just kind of, instead of building or digging the channel lower to get that elevation, we're just really bringing the earth adjacent to it higher so that there's more of that channel or more of that conveyance that can go through the channel itself.
Commissioner Risch?
Madam Chair, Gabe, so in Pioneer Park, will we be making a channel or digging something out through the volleyball courts or something?
Chair, Commissioners, Commissioner Rich, Risch, within Pioneer Park, there would really be no excavation. It would be where the existing shared-use path is, starting from that elevation, then building up a berm that maybe goes up two or three feet, levels off, and then comes back down again. So the channel, we don't touch, the shared-use path, we don't touch, we just raise the elevation of the ground in between those two to then lessen the likelihood that that channel or the water inside the channel, I guess, overflows its banks and gets the trail wet and the sand volleyball courts wet and the playground equipment wet and et cetera. I would note, there's always a bigger event, there's always going to be a time that that probably still happens, but when we're in the area, this seems like a really good opportunity to try to make that as well as we can for the park district in that area. But, good question. So that's kind of the proposed improvements, as we now talk about what's new, I guess, if you will, just the concept of the Tyler Parkway project occurring. So here's a map, north is up, I didn't label my streets here, but Valley Drive's on the bottom, you can kind of project where Tyler Parkway will be extended, and I'll show that in a second here. So if I turn on the next photo, it'll just overlay the graphic, and this graphic was prepared as part of the Tyler Cooley study, or even in the master plan documents, that we knew that Tyler Parkway might be an option in the future, so we wanted to make sure that whatever improvements would be included in the Tyler Cooley project, stormwater project, would not have to rely on a future Tyler Parkway, but also would recognize if that exists, that it's not going to be problematic for both of these to operate in the same area. So you can see that the embankment for what we'll call Tyler, upstream of Tyler Parkway, is not in the main channel, just off the main channel, allowing room for Tyler Parkway to be constructed through the channel bottom. Now, as we get further into some of these decision-making things and getting some of these timelines worked out, it's definitely advantageous for us to determine which of these items could be done concurrently, either by the same contractor, or at least have each contractor know what the other one's doing. So I mean, if nothing else, there needs to be tighter coordination, but we're even looking at elements that we can just bid as one plan set. If we're hauling material from the same borrow source to build the embankment, that'd be a really good time for us to haul material for the embankment for both Tyler Parkway, as well as the regional stormwater tension that's 80 feet away from that same location. So we're looking at some of those activities, working with our design teams, our two separate consulting firms that are working on both of these, asking them to put their thinking caps on and figure out what ones of these items can we combine. A lot of that will depend on the material types and what material is suitable to be used for each of these activities. And if we have all good materials, probably lots of options for us to consider. If we have limited good material, we still might have to export in, borrow from some other site, and maybe some of this coordination is more just coordination and not one project is building or one contractor is building all of these items. But we will have to be aware of the embankment materials, access, even the duration and phasing, maybe combining those concepts. The Tyler Parkway project would, in theory, or would be planned to be start construction in '26, next year, but we won't have a drivable surface on that until '27, when all of the embankment has settled out and we're ready to put a surfacing on top of it. That's another little wrinkle in the timing, then, of when would we want to rip open Valley Drive to construct the Valley Drive crossing improvements, as well as Claremont Road. So there could be discussions on when's the best time to do that. Should we wait until Tyler Parkway is open and available before we rip into Valley Drive? Those would be some of the things that we'll kind of work through, and if it raises to a commission-level type of discussion on phasing, we will bring that back for your discussion. So, any questions, I guess, high level on the Tyler Parkway coordination piece, or any guidance that you'd want to share on that? If not, I guess we keep it like any of our other engineering projects and try to make this best decision we can for the public on their behalf.
Commissioner Risch?
Madam Chair, Gabe, when this was approved by the commission, I asked you if there's a possibility we could get a fishing pond. We've got one in east Bismarck, we have one in south Bismarck, and they're used by a lot of people, and that's a long ways away from the other two places we have them in town. So when you're building these dams, I know you want to keep them for water storage when we got to, but is there a possibility we could actually keep some water in one of them and do a fishing pond? I've spoke with the game and fish department, and they're interested in participating with us.
Chair Cleary, Commissioners, Commissioner Risch, so I think the opportunity is obviously there. I mean, there's land, there's water, it's being fed hydraulically from some source, so it's no different than what the Ducks Unlimited, I should say it's no different, it's similar in the sense of what Ducks Unlimited is doing in the property that Parks and Rec own south in what was the Gulf Drive area and now the Claremont Family Conservation Park. Even when they were going through their, you know, habitat restoration project, we said, hey, there's a lot of water, how much water do you need? And they said, we just need a little bit. They just needed a little bit of stormwater to recharge their ponds. They don't want to take on the entire channel, they want to take on just a little bit to make sure that the water's circulating through that for the health of whatever, you know, aquatic species they might have in there. So I think we'd take the similar approach. If there is interest in some other amenities in this land, whether it's in the land that the city's already purchased, or some other location up and down the Cooley, I think there's value in exploring that. I just don't think it's going to be in the main channel. It won't be in this run here, we won't want to enlarge these ponds. When we enlarge these ponds and have them hold water, we'd have to have more of them because we've already attained that 25 acre or 24.99 acre feet of storage, and if we start putting a wet basin in those, we will start just decreasing the amount of storage that's available. So if there's only, if 24 acre feet of standing water, we only get one acre foot of stormwater that we can actually add to the system, which means we need a lot more ponds in this entire corridor if we have them full of water all of the time. Just need one, so. But for the projects to still function, I guess, is my component, that if you filled that in, you'd probably need another pond somewhere else in this corridor, which would increase costs. So what I would recommend is that we would consider that concept, but look to other locations in the area that either the city owns or park district owns, as far as either the future master planning of the Claremont Family Conservation Park, or in the property that the city purchased for the purpose of both this project and the Tyler Parkway extension, to see if there's area within that. But I wouldn't tie it to a special assessed improvement project for stormwater master plan necessarily, I guess is where I would land on that one.
Any other questions for Gabe? Are you looking for something specific from us for this update?
No, I have some more slides, that was probably just more on the coordination piece. If there is a concept of saying, thou shalt, we really want to keep all of these roadways open at all times, or only close one at a time, we can accommodate those sorts of things, but in doing so, it increases potentially the timeframe of some of these projects occurring. If we're saying you can't take this road out of commission until this one's done, and we know that this one won't be done for three years, okay, well, that just means that some of this other work won't happen until four years from now. So that's just something to consider as we're talking about some of those restrictions.
Sure, sure, okay.
For upcoming items, kind of the most pressing items we have for the stormwater improvement project would be some final permitting that we'll have with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. That kind of took a standstill at one point in time due to some desire for them to ensure that there's no cultural resources in the area, so we did additional cultural resource evaluation and came back with no findings, which is good, but that was a piece of information that the Corps wanted. So we restarted that process with the Corps. We will still need easement acquisitions from some of the other landowners in this corridor, one of them being Bismarck Parks and Recreation District. We also have some other landowners downstream, in particular across from Pioneer Park, and we have some property next, or that Ducks Unlimited owns in this area that would also be conveyed, so we'd have to work with them on what improvements we'd put through their properties. We'd like to finalize our design this fall/winter and then construction, at least components of this to be started yet in 2026, in concert with the Tyler Parkway Extension Project. So it's very likely that you might see a bid package for Tyler Parkway Extension that includes some elements of this stormwater project that would be bid into that and funded separately from the half-cent sales tax that we'd be paying for Tyler Parkway. So it's kind of just a preview of what you might see as we get going. Obviously, when we start, we'll have more commission touchpoints on this project because we'll have to create a preliminary engineering report that would kind of identify some of these elements and would better lay out our planned approach. So that'll be at a minimum the next time you get to see it, before we would do any sort of bids or public awards or anything like that. And my last slide that I have for you is on our public communication. This is what we've done so far, and then just want to have opportunity here at the end to discuss what else you'd like us to do. We have a project website maintained for this watershed that shows the existings and current stormwater master plan, for that matter, shows all the non-current older master plans as well, as well as the presentations we've given to this board, Parks and Rec Board, any presentations we've given publicly are all available for the public to see on our website. We did send a direct mailing to the adjacent property owners as part of our U.S. Army Corps permitting process. Within that, gave them an explanation of the project, some frequently asked questions. It did kind of confuse the neighborhood because we sent it to just the people that are adjacent to it, not across the street from it. So one person might get that letter, and then the other guy didn't, and so they wondered why that was the case, and it was more of the, less the Corps' requirements in terms of who gets notified, and it's just they're adjacent, not everyone in the watershed. We would typically, and we would plan on this project, send a direct mailing to everyone within the watershed, telling them about the project, letting them know the timing that it'll occur, once that timing is better known. That's maybe something I'd want some input from you all on. We would typically do this at a state of the project where we have the costs really well-known, and that's usually after we bid the project. It's typically when we would send that notification out, which would give them the most accurate number for the assessment. A lot of times in our special assessed projects, we send that letter out early during the protest period, but a stormwater improvement project is a non-protestable thing, so if the commission wants to do it, the commission can do it. It's a life-safety type of component, unlike the road maintenance components or projects that we would work on where the adjacent landowners have a larger say, if you will, on whether or not the project proceeds with special assessments as the funding. So I just offer this to you now as if there's other things you want us to do, or if that sounds like an okay approach, we'll continue. This is kind of the approach that we've taken with every other regional stormwater project. We just don't have a lot of these to compare to, nor do we have a lot of these into the future that are in the hopper. I mean, a lot of our regional stormwater master plans in the new watersheds that we're working in require onsite detention and over-detention so that we don't have to do a large regional project 20 years after the first development occurred. We're just doing stormwater detention at the time of development and at the pace of development. So we don't have a lot of future projects that we're planning in this regional sense, but we do have some of these that are master planned that we really are out of options in Tyler Cooley because we've already developed darn near all of the thing at this point in time. So I'd pause for any questions or direction from the commission on this topic.
Any questions for Gabe? I don't think so. A future mailing sounds good to me.
Well, I guess that's the extent of my presentation, and if there's anything else, I'm at your beck and call. You know where to find me.
Thanks, Gabe.
Thank you all.
Okay, we will move on to item H, consider the request to review the timing of collection for utility capital charges. Michael?
Chair and Commissioners, just wanted to come before you tonight, we had a request to look at our utility capital charge time of collections. Just a little history, utility capital charges went in place in February of 19, after our rate study in 2018. And what it is, it's as development happens, the developers pay this at the time of developing, and it's a buy-in to existing infrastructure that the city has invested in, whether it's the water plant, the wastewater plant, transmission lines, stuff like that, that was done in order to support development, and it's a way to buy into that system. The Home Builders Association made a request to review that. The request is to look at the time of collections of either taking it from the time of development and moving it and shifting it to the time that a building permit is pulled out. And staff has reviewed this request, there's certainly things that are beneficial in there, there are certainly things that we would have to have some further discussion on, but seeing that this was a commission action to implement this, we wanted to bring it forward to see if there is any direction you might have for us as we look at this, if you even want to look at this time of collection, or if there's any other questions you might have about it.
Any questions for Michael? Mayor?
Yes, so the reason it's here is I probably am the one who am driving it mostly because it's come to me. The purpose for looking at when that collection occurs is, right now, when the developer is collecting it upfront, they've now got a carrying cost on that charge, so there's interest factored into their lot prices. It's probably increasing their lot prices, I don't know, it depends on who you talk to, but let's just say it's between $2,500 and $4,000 per lot for carrying the cost of those charges upfront versus it being collected when the building permit is pulled. And so I think it is a way to look at reducing lot prices into the future, and also currently because the developers have assured us that they will reduce their price if they are refunded any money. But we would need to give direction to Michael and his team and others on city staff to proceed forward to evaluate this further and vet it further.
Any other comments, questions? Commissioners Anker?
Yeah, so I'm, I mean, with the, it did go to the mayor first, and he did include me, so if anybody's worried about that, that didn't happen. I don't have a problem as to what, when we do it or how we do it. It will clean up some stuff on the commercial side of things because we've always maintained that that initial charge had to be a two-inch meter, and sometimes, sometimes a building does require one, and sometimes when you put it on there, it doesn't, you know, so there's that scenario. The, one of the drawbacks that we discussed a little bit internally is that the cost for the permit when the- for the permit when the builder goes and gets that permit is gonna, is gonna be, you know, whatever that meter charge is now, $4,300, $4,700 bucks, right?
That's what the UCCs.
For a three-quarter, UCC charges, right?
Yeah, so that'd be added on.
Yeah, so we might have to, we might have to take a look internally as to maybe come up with something that includes the meter and the UCC charge, just to make it a little bit more clear when they get that. But it will be a rather large bill at the time of the, of the time of permitting that they're not accustomed to paying now, so. But I think we can communicate that. Couple builders that I spoke to, I think the mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you talked to a couple too, they understood it and understand the pros and cons of this switch, so.
Yeah, and like Commissioner Zinker said, I talked to two or three as well, and so, I mean, it's, they understand the cons and the pros. The big thing is, is that if we're gonna reduce lot prices a little bit, I think it helps, every bit helps.
So it essentially remove, like, you're taking those dollars off of the lot price, but then they shift, then that bill will be bigger when they're doing that billing, building permit?
Correct.
But in theory, it should be less because they're not having to pay interest on it while they're holding it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever time that, yeah, it's kind of a shell game a little bit.
Sure.
But, I mean, it's, it doesn't affect, it affects everybody, but actually, the business people that are taking care of it are a smaller group. If a general citizen builds a home and goes through it, they're, they're gonna get a little sticker shock when they gotta pull that out, so there could be some of that, but.
Sure.
Yeah, whatever way we go or whatever we want to do is, really, to me, doesn't really matter, so.
Commissioner Connolly?
We still, but we still need to collect the money for maintenance on the, on the facilities that we have, and that's what the UCC charge is for.
Okay.
So.
Commissioner Connolly?
Well, if I remember right, because a lot of this was a lot of discussion that I had with your predecessor, Michelle, is trying to get away from the abeyance conversation where you're holding things of somebody's in the county and they get annexed in, then those look-back charges occur, to where with this, it can be part of the discussion, like you'd mentioned, Commissioner Zinker, is it's still, most of those charges are gonna hit closer to that point of sale, to where it won't be a later date to where we're holding on to that, and then all of a sudden it hits later, which creates a much bigger uncomfortable conversation. Am I consistent with that when I share it?
Chair, Commissioners, yes, like, it will be closer to the time of sale of that lot, so that does help. One of the big things that we are looking at is to making sure that wherever this UCC charge does fall can still be rolled up into a home loan if that property owner has a home loan and doesn't have to come out of their pocket. So we want to protect that part as much as possible to make sure that people can get into those homes.
And it's much better at that point than a later point because all of a sudden, if you get hit with all of those costs, those costs only rise over time, so. Thank you.
Any other questions for Michael? Just consensus on moving forward with?
If you're good with wanting to look into it, we would certainly bring any, any information back for a decision at a later date after we've gone through and vetted everything. Consent is would be okay.
Okay, I mean, I'm fine with it. Seems like you have your consensus.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Okay, we are going to, any other business, I guess, before we go into executive session? Commissioner Rich, I was just gonna, before we go on, I wanted to remind people, because of the storm, Public Works is sending roads and streets out with garbage collection to pick up tree debris on the boulevards, so it's not something that usually happens now that we don't collect extras, but they will be doing that all this week and all next week during your regular garbage pickup day. So just in case you didn't already see that PSA that's out there. Commissioner Rich?
Good point. I just want to give a shout out to Public Works and Forestry. Friday night, we had a substantial storm, 82 mile an hour winds. They were on duty that night, all through the night, on the weekend, and they've been working hard ever since. And as you mentioned, if you put your stuff out on the boulevard now, they'll pick it up between now and July 3rd. But it's got to be small enough that one person can bring it, load it up. So that was a, I appreciate the employees that have been out there working so hard, and this is a great idea, a great service to our community going around picking up these trees off the boulevards. Another thing I have on this Saturday, we have our June 19th celebration at Kiwanis Park, South Washington Street, so urge people to come out and engage in our June 19th celebration. And the last thing, I guess it's a question for Commissioner Connolly. I'm wondering, you know, at the last meeting, we, you talked about your ballot idea, and you were gonna work with city staff. Are you progressing, are things going okay in that regard?
We had, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Commissioner Rich. We had one meeting with Commissioners Zinker and Jason and Gabe, and making progress. The one question, thanks for asking, is that there was a submission of new wording on the 6th, and the committee chair has not received the letter as response to that yet. So he had surgery today on his shoulder, and he was just looking for that letter before the next steps were taken.
Anything else?
Yeah, it's, if you want to add to that, Julie.
The letter did go out.
Okay.
I just don't know how the postal service is working that, so.
Okay.
It's in progress and through the system, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, with no other business, I'm gonna word this incorrectly, but we need a motion to go into executive session, correct?
I'll make a motion when we go into executive session under North Dakota Century Code, Section 44-04-19.2, regarding contract negotiations, negotiating strategy under NDCC, Section 44-04-19.1, for the consideration of land acquisition.
Does the second one also need to be read?
We can only go to one after the second one.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
There's a process tonight.
Did I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead and call roll. Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Chair Cleary?